Okay, I'd like to resume the meeting of September 9th, 2019. If people could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America into the Republic which stands on a nation, on a God, and in this world, for the teaching and justice for all.
We would like to take a moment of silence to remember Ron Ragland, the District's Assistant Superintendent of Educational Support Programs in Alignment. Ron passed away on August 26th. Ron spent his entire 35-year career teaching and coaching in public education. He had been with U-46 since 2012. He oversaw the district's Avid College Readiness System, supported the superintendent's scholarship program, worked closely with the Alignment Collaborative for Education, and served in a number of advisory groups in the community. In January, the City of Elgin's Human Relations Commission honored Ron as a recipient of the 2019 Dr. King Humanitarian Award. Friends and coworkers remember Ron as a man with an open and generous spirit, a passion for education, and a dedication to improving outcomes for all students. Ron lived the U-46 motto of "All means all." Survivors include his wife Tina, their children Matthew and Marissa, and three grandchildren. A funeral service was held in Elgin's High School Chesbrough Fieldhouse. His family asked that, in lieu of flowers, memorials be made to the U-46 Educational Foundation. We will keep Ron's family and friends in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. First on the agenda, Accent on Achievement.
Principal Damaski, do you want to join us up front? Tonight, as part of the Board of Education's Accent on Achievement, the board is happy to recognize Bartlett High School for being named to the U.S. News and World Report's Best High Schools list for 2019. News and World Report awards high schools with gold, silver, and bronze medals, using gold medals to reflect the greatest level of college readiness. Bartlett High School earned a silver medal, ranking 86th in the state of Illinois. And you may know that the Best High Schools list was developed using College Readiness Index that considers data points such as performance on state exams, the percentage of students passing at least one advanced placement exam, and graduation rates. Bartlett High School has a graduation rate of 94%, which is well above the 68% to be eligible for a medal. Congratulations.
As a proud parent of two BHS graduates, I am pleased to present you with the Certificate of Achievement that reads, "The Board of Education of School District U-46 hereby recognizes Bartlett High School for being named a Best High School Top 100 in Illinois by U.S. News and World Report, presented this ninth day of September 2019, signed by Board President Sue Kerr and Chief Executive Officer Tony Sanders."
Believe, honor, succeed, we are BHS, and we dream big. Cuckaw!
Thank you very much. Thank you, Michael.
All right, we're ready to honor a couple other schools who are with us tonight. If Principal Cardenas and Principal Zerko want to step forward. We are also recognizing our Summer Reading Challenge winners tonight. This year, Sycamore Trails Elementary School in Bartlett won for having the largest percentage of students who completed the summer reading program, with approximately 30% of the elementary school's students participating in the program. And Wayne Elementary School won for having the largest increase in summer reading finishers from last year. Wayne Elementary was most improved, with 77 students finishing the challenge in 2019, more than twice that of 2018. Both schools are served by the Bartlett Public Library. So I have two certificates of achievement here I'm going to read. The first is for Sycamore Trails. "The Board of Education of School District U-46 hereby recognizes Sycamore Trails Elementary School for winning the 2019 U-46 Summer Reading Challenge for having the highest percentage of finishers overall, presented this ninth day of September 2019, signed by Board President Sue Kerr and Chief Executive Officer Tony Sanders." Congratulations. And then this Certificate of Achievement, "The Board of Education of School District U-46 hereby recognizes Wayne Elementary School for winning the 2019 U-46 Summer Reading Challenge for having the largest increase in summer reading finishers from last year, presented this ninth day of September 2019, signed by Board President Sue Kerr and Chief Executive Officer Tony Sanders." Congratulations.
So I have to put you on the spot. Adam, I know you just started at Wayne Elementary School, so I'll let you go second. So you can think about your answer. So Lisa, how did you, I mean, tell me what some of the activities that you did as a school to try to make sure that you won the award again this year?
Sure, I'm sorry, you need to hold my trophy. So the partnership between our families, our community, our Bartlett Public Library, and just having the importance of reading and to help us with our vision.
So you did not connect ed calls every day?
We did do connect ed calls. Sycamore Trails also has guest readers from our staff who go and take their time on Mondays throughout the summer to read at the Bartlett Public Library, and we do connect ed and send out the reading logs to help us.
Adam, you have any idea how they did it this year? If not, maybe somebody...
Well, luckily, I have my wonderful librarian here with us who can help answer that. Mr. Berger did not prepare me for this little presentation tonight, so thank you, Mr. Berger. But it is evident, being brand-new to Wayne School in the district, that the love for literacy is all around the Wayne School community. It's just awesome. So I'm going to have our librarian, Dina, here talk a little bit more about that.
I used bribery. And I did, I did tell the students that, well, that there was a chance that we could win a trophy if they participated in the summer reading program. And I really didn't think we would win a trophy, but I was very proud of them. But they, they do love reading at our school, and I told them about the summer reading program, and I really did encourage them to participate in the summer reading program at the public library. And, and I guess they did it. So I'm very proud of them.
And Mr. Sanders, we also have someone from the Bartlett Library you might want to introduce.
Well, I think it's super, and I think it's wonderful that you are encouraging the students to participate during the summer. For years, we've been having summer reading programs, and this just shows the hard work that the principals and the school district put into it, and we have a great time. So it works for everybody.
All right, next on the agenda, this is Monday, is a public hearing for the 2019-2020 School District U-46 budget. So I will declare the public hearing open. Are there any comments from the public on the budget? Have we received any comments?
The legal office is not.
Okay, so I guess I'll declare the public hearing closed. Right, next is Strategic Plan Report. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we actually have two strategic plan reports. The last one was our strategic plan report was a planned report for the Board of Education at the last board meeting, which we, we changed suddenly due to the sudden passing of our friend Ron Ragland. So if I could ask the team to step forward, we have alternative placement programming, an overview for the board on, on how we handle some students who sometimes struggle to fit within a comprehensive school environment, and the many different programs we do offer district-wide to support all learners. So with us are Dr. Suzanne Johnson, Deputy Superintendent of Instruction, Dr. Latrice Satterwhite, Director of Specialized Student Services, Dr. Barazza, did I say that right? Formerly, formerly Dr. Leonard, Coordinator of Student Discipline, Ms. Giaccoloni, Assistant Director of Compliance, and Ms. Stewart, Assistant Principal of Specialized Student Services. They will be providing tonight's report.
Oh, that's not us. I've got the ace presentation up.
So they're going to present actually on Alignment Collaborative for Education, and then the alignment folks can present on alternative options for students. I'm sure they're prepared for that.
Sure, it'll be exciting. All right. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening. As Mr. Sanders has already welcomed the team, we appreciate your time tonight. This evening, we will provide an overview of different areas of alternative programming provided to U-46 students. Some of these programs have seen a number of recent updates, and some of the information you receive tonight will be to provide background for programming moving forward. As with all of our programming within U-46, we certainly work to triangulate our board policy with school code and also our best practices around our mission and vision for our students. So certainly, our goal is always to provide the best instructional opportunity for all of our students in their least restrictive environment, and that being within our general education classrooms and in our general education sites, while of course, meeting guidelines as already outlined. In so doing, our work as well is always to meet our academic standards as outlined within our strategic plan moving forward, to provide appropriate support for staffs, that they have the training, professional development, and resources on a regular and ongoing basis to meet the needs of our students, and as well to be accountable to our community, our stakeholders in moving forward as well. Again, stressing that we work and we strive always to make those instructional opportunities available as they are culturally, linguistically, and developmentally appropriate for all of our students. So as we move forward this evening, you receive this overview of some of these different tenants of programs. Again, keeping in mind, we work to provide that programming for all students, our general education students, as well as students who may be receiving resources through IEP. Additionally, we strive to provide opportunity for access to all programming for students, not only inclusive of our academic programming, but also extracurricular activities as well via their home site or their sites that they receive services. So to begin this evening, I will introduce Dr. Barazza.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'm going to talk up a little bit about alternative programs that are at the Dream Academy. So Dream Academy is the location for most of these programs, with the exception of a satellite location at Larkin High School for Dream Co-op. So we have two sets of programs that we run in partnership with the Regional Office of Education. One of those is the Alternative Learning Opportunities Program, or ALAP for short. Those are our dream programs. So we have Dream High School, which are full-day programs, which are similar to a traditional high school, but in a smaller, more personalized environment. We also have Dream Co-op, which is a cooperative work-based learning program for students who are at least 17 with 31 credits and are employed. So students attend school for three hours per day and work for at least 10 hours a week. The program teacher monitors their working hours, visits their workplace, and they can receive up to two elective credits for their job. We also have the Regional Safe Schools Program, which is the new beginnings programs, and we have a new beginnings high school, which is, again, full-day program, and then a new beginnings co-op, which is very similar to the Dream Co-op. It's the same model. Both programs offer additional supports for social-emotional learning in a smaller, more personalized environment, and are designed for students whose social-emotional needs act as barriers to their ability to function successfully in a comprehensive high school. So Dream ALAP programs are typically for students who demonstrate internalizing behaviors, and new beginnings programs are typically for students who demonstrate externalizing behaviors. behaviors. Okay, so our learning, excuse me, the Dream Program objectives are to return students to their home school to a post-secondary program or an adult education program. We work with students to develop a success plan and a transition plan for each student, and we follow-up monitoring of each student for at least two semesters when they're returning to their home school. And there's a transition specialist at the Dream Academy who facilitates that follow-up work. Okay, so this is enrollment data for 1920 so far, number of students enrolled in each grade level, and this is for the ALAP and RSSP programs, so all the programs that are at the Dream Academy. So we have currently, as of today, the numbers have changed slightly just due to additional student intakes and enrollment. So we have 28 freshmen, 59 sophomores, 77 11th graders, and 72 students who are seniors.
Yeah. And just as a note, as Dr. Barazza has pointed out, those numbers will fluctuate as the year moves on. And so the numbers, as we provided when we first toggled for board two weeks ago, you've seen an increase already in those numbers, and there is fluctuation because, as identified, our work is always to try to give students ample opportunity to transition back to their schools as well.
Okay, and this is Dream Academy enrollment data, program enrollments by race, ethnicity over the last four years. And this is male, female enrollment data. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about our new credit recovery program, the Phoenix Program. This was created as an alternative to OnBUDSMAN. Last year, as we were doing an audit of students that were enrolled at OnBUDSMAN, we did notice that many students were there for primarily credit recovery. And because they were placed out of district, it was really challenging to help develop clear transition plans for them to return to home school or get to post-secondary. So the credit recovery also wasn't as robust as we may have liked it to be. So we have developed this program. This is for students ages 17 to 20 who are significantly credit deficient, typically more than one year behind on their credits. Having the students in district allows us a much greater opportunity for credit recovery support and transition planning. And this is for primarily, again, dropout recovery for students who haven't attended in at least a semester. We also have students that were previously at OnBUDSMAN and other alternative programs, and we're starting to get referrals from the comprehensive schools. Okay, and the objectives for that program are to complete graduation requirements, transition to post-secondary program, adult education, or directly to employment because of the age of the students, we're typically not transitioning back to the home school. Okay, and again, a little bit of an update on the numbers. We are, let me get to my right page here. So total enrollment right now is 38 students, shifted again because of some additional enrollments in the last couple of weeks. Students' age range is 17 to 20, and their credit range right now is between 7 and 40 credits.
I'll talk about the Central Schools programs, and those programs involve our Moving On Program, which is our therapeutic day school, public day school, as well as SWEP and Center House. So the students that are Moving On Program, only students with IEPs in that therapeutic type of environment, and also the three main disabilities that are served in that program are students with an emotional disability, which is 61% of the student population, specific learning disabilities, which is 19%, and then other health impairments, which is 18%. With our SWEP program, as you all know, that is our diner that the students run, is a training program that is right here in the ESC Center. Also, it's a blend of classroom work as well as community instruction, and self-advocacy is something that is really a focus on throughout all of the activities that the students do through the SWEP program, and our main function is really working on that functional curriculum as well. And then students in this program, they have to come in with some level of independency, and then we kind of work from there. So there is a process that we do follow for students to enter into SWEP as well as Center House and our other transition programs. Okay? With Center House, our goal is to provide those students with a variety of possible post-school outcomes. Our basic areas that we focus on are work, home, community, and recreation and leisure. That is an actual house, for those that may not know, that the district owns, which is near Coleman Elementary School, and the students report there every day. At Center House, we really focus on that independence is very important, and many of them have jobs in the community. We also teach them about going to the bank once a week to deposit their paychecks and do a budget, and then also we teach them how to write public transportation on their own. So it's kind of a step process.
Dr. Satterwhite, could you just quickly share with the board and the community as well, so this is appropriate for students of what age ranges again?
After they have finished their high school graduation requirements.
And then they stay with us until?
The day before their 22nd birthday.
Thank you.
Okay. And the outcomes for our Central School programs is really for the students to develop that level of respect, that responsibility, and to be active citizens. Also, our goal is to get the students to return to their home school if they're in the Moving On Program, but for many of them, they are successful in that smaller environment that's more therapeutic, where they have access to those different supports and the intensive social work supports and things like that. So some of them, when they're at that level to return to their home school, they choose not to return because they are successful with that small environment. The data around the Central Schools program, just want to highlight that over the past three years, we have seen an increase in enrollment. We went up 27 students from the 2017 to the 2018 school year, and then we went up by 16 students from the 2018 to 2019 school year. And as my colleagues had shared with the other programs, those are the numbers that were at the end of the program, that they do fluctuate throughout the school year as students are coming and leaving the programs. For, the largest increase is in our 11th and 12th graders, and we found that usually that's due to credit recovery for those students, so we can help them to graduate. And then our Center House and SWEP numbers are capped due to space, so that's why you do not see much of a fluctuation in those numbers. Okay? When you look at the male and female, the number of males and females in our three programs, you see there are quite a few males. And according to the National Autism Association, every one in 59 students in the U.S. have an autism diagnosis, and boys are four times more likely to be diagnosed than girls. Also, the high number of, there is a high number of students with autism in our Center House program, which was in 2018, 53% of our students had autism, and in 2019, 55% had autism. And then for our SWEP program, in 2018, we had 32% that had autism or diagnosed with autism, and then 13% in 2019. In our Moving On Program, we have a very small percentage, was 1% of our students that have autism. Then, as I shared before, those other three disabilities were emotional disabilities, significant learning disabilities, and other health impairments. Also, if you look at the statistics that the ADD or the Attention Deficit Disorder Resource Center states, that there's been a 42% increase in the number of students diagnosed with ADHD over the past eight years, and males are three times more likely to be diagnosed with ADHD too. So that could be a part of the larger number of males. And boys also typically demonstrate more externalizing behaviors, which impacts the learning environment, as opposed to the girls are more internalizers. And then if we look at the data between ethnicity, the data does reflect there's some disproportionality there, and that's something that the district is working on to address, the number of African-American students being identified with an emotional disabilities. We are looking at our district practices and procedures to make sure they are in compliance with federal law for initial eligibility, and also looking at that trauma-informed care, treatment, or supports, making sure they're in place, as well as MTSS interventions, making sure that they're appropriate and they're implemented with fidelity before considering special education services.
I'm sorry to hijack, but before you move on from these slides, I know the board also has attended the different transition graduation programs.
Yes.
That it represents more schools than what you see here, so there's more programs to just SWEP and Center House. Can you just briefly touch on?
Yes.
Like the South Elgin High and the other programs, the board members?
Okay, for this year, we have five transition classrooms only at South Elgin High School. Last year, we did have a class at Bartlett High, but South Elgin is structured to have the transition program because they have the apartment there. So we collaboratively made that decision to move all the programs there so they can access that resource. And those students are not at that level of independence for SWEP and Center House, but they also have the opportunity to remain within the district up until their 22nd birthday. No problem.
All right, next we move on to talking about private placement. In School District U46, we do have roughly anywhere between 160 to 200 students who access a therapeutic day school or a residential placement while they're with us. Primarily, 99% of our students will go to a therapeutic day school. The purpose of the therapeutic day school is to provide a more intensive level of support with a smaller ratio of students to teachers, and have additional school psychologists, school social workers, and crisis prevention staff to address their needs that happen usually on a daily basis. One thing to note is that the difference between a therapeutic day school and a residential placement is 24 hours level of supervision. So most of our students that we're talking about here today go to a therapeutic day school. We only have roughly under five students placed at a residential placement. Our ultimate purpose is when a student goes to a therapeutic day school is to develop the academic and social, emotional, and functional skills to bring them back to a U46 school. Typically, when they return, we're looking at bringing them to a self-contained setting or possibly our Moving On Program. However, when you get older and are in high school, we do offer more opportunities within our comprehensive high school program. So we look at ways that we can bridge them being at a therapeutic day school and participating in their general high school. So we often have students who will spend one to two periods a day at a, our general high school's accessing elective so that they can build on their experiences that therapeutic day schools cannot often offer them. When you look at our enrollment data, you'll see that it's divided up between children who are from early childhood to age 21, working on transitional skills. So we do have students who start at age three and go all the way up until the day before their 22nd birthday. When you look at our gender, you'll see that there are more males that access therapeutic day school environment versus females. And then we have it broken up by ethnicity, and you can see that it spans students across all races participating in this level of programming.
So one of the areas that is actually new for us in U46, and we're going to share some information for you this evening, is around our interim alternative educational setting. So as we constantly reflect upon the data and we look to improve our practices, one of our areas of inquiry around how we can better meet the needs of our students is indeed around a place where we identified a gap in our practice, and that gap is around this topic of interim alternative educational settings. So over a year ago, we started to review some of our data around our students in U46 and discovered that we had an increased reliance upon some of our community partners, for example, Streamwood Behavioral Health Services, and that there are times when students exhibit an increased threat to themselves or to others, and upon a threat assessment, it might be needed for that student to have an interim alternative educational setting. What that provides for us as a school district is an opportunity to build capacity, skills, strategies, make sure that we have resources available for that student, the family, within our general education least restrictive environments. In the meantime, another provider is able to, on occasion, provide support for that student and family as well. So how can we best put in place resources to allow that student to be successful within our classrooms and within our sites? What we discovered, though, is that, as I mentioned, we have some area for growth, and certainly, one of those being, one of those questions being, how could we provide a similar program with partnerships within our schools? Knowing that if we're able to maintain that enrollment for our students within our schools, they are more likely to be successful in meeting the objectives that have already been outlined for you this evening. So upon review during the 2017-18 year, we discovered that we had approximately 86 students who were placed in an interim alternative educational setting, and identified that certainly student monitoring is crucial to student success, and that if we could identify and create that interim alternative educational setting, we would be more successful in monitoring student achievement, student outcomes, building appropriate growth goals for students as well within U46. And therefore, we took on this project in our research and exploration over the course of the last 15 months. We've been working at drafting plans, drafting procedures, putting in place the appropriate assessment tools to be able to support students in accordance with changes to school code and also in accordance with our policy and our student code of conduct. Additionally, we have been reviewing what are the vital components to be able to build that capacity for our students, and what are our needs as well. As you've seen the overview of services this evening, you've most likely identified that we have more services available to our high school students, and identified that we need to provide a greater level of service for our kindergarten through eighth-grade students who are exhibiting threats to self or threat to others, and while we work to provide those resources for them. So in interim alternative educational setting, we really look at bringing a few different pieces that you've heard about today together. So that's that pro-social peer culture, making that as positive as possible in conjunction with the academics, and finding that positive school environment for them. You know, oftentimes, our kids don't feel as connected, and making sure that we can help them establish those connection or skills to be able to establish those connections. Parental involvement, which is an important piece, and then, of course, the community outreach, as well as the restoration and transitioning. This interim alternative educational setting would be on a short-term basis for students who need that more intensive support, but only again for that short-term setting. The interim alternative educational setting really works on that behavior maintenance for a set interval of time. We also look at decreasing, of course, the aggression while increasing our completion of classwork. That's always, you know, our goal. And then, of course, to active participation in all subject areas, including that social skills piece, skill sessions, as well as related service providers, meeting with them and providing that embedded within their program. Of course, we hope to have improved attendance rates, minimal redirections, progress toward goals, and then use of those coping strategies. And if we can set that foundation for students, we hope that that provides them some tools that they need to better transition back to their home school setting. Okay? So in this scenario, the team would look like three academic classrooms, a K2, a 3.5, and a 6.8. And you can see on the slide, it's very well-staffed to include one and a half full-time social workers, two behavior specialists, a teacher, and a teacher's assistant, in addition to being supported by that program director. So that's a lot of intensive supports for really small classroom sizes. And so as we've been researching this, and we've actually, we had put out an RFP a little bit over a year ago, in which we were researching providers that we could partner with. So experts in this area that we would be able to partner with, who would be able to provide the appropriate professional development and training, and also staff resources as well, and staff themselves, to support us with this effort based ideally at one of our U46 schools, to be able to provide us greater oversight and greater access to our own students and programming and monitoring of our students. And so as we've shared this evening, we've given you a little bit of an overview of what that alternative programming, educational setting and programming would be. And we know that originally, the plan was to give you this overview two weeks ago and then bring back the proposal via contract tonight. Lucky you, you're going to get both of them tonight in just a little bit, actually. So you'll hear a little bit more about this programming that we are looking to bring to our students to meet their needs. Thank you.
So just to bring it home, I think what's amazing... So just to bring it home, I think what's amazing is five years ago, before we transitioned to the Dream Academy and we had Giver Street High School. Think about all the changes we've seen as a district in this time and the way we've been able to better support students in meeting their individual needs, truly demonstrating the motto "All Means All" really is a thing in U46. And I think this next proposal you'll see coming forward in a little bit tonight will continue to demonstrate our commitment to all students.
Thank you. Other questions? Donna?
Not a question. Tony took away most of what I was going to say. But you know, that's what amazes me all the time is how we are able to offer more and more opportunities to our students, specialized needs and general ed and all our different areas. We just keep finding ways to meet their needs so that we do reach every student and so that all does mean all. Thank you for the work you've done.
Kate?
Just wanted to say too, thank you for this great information and all of that. And as a parent of a kid who's going to be in one of those transition programs, it's great to see that you're working and constantly adapting and changing. And you're going to have a great program for him when he's ready.
Melissa?
So one question on the credit recovery and the Phoenix enrollment. Are we actually pulling students out of ombudsman then and shifting them over?
Yes.
Okay, so how many students are we participating in doing that? Because I know it said capacity 60, is that?
Sure. So right now, for this year, just starting with the first year of it, our capacity for that program is 60.
Okay.
We do still have ombudsman services for students who are expelled with educational services.
Right.
So we currently have six students there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we're serving them better, actually at a much better, more efficiently and more effectively.
Yeah, yeah.
So essentially, ombudsman is only for the children we expel.
Okay.
Other questions?
So I was wondering also about the credit recovery Phoenix. So are they actually physically going to, is that held in this building?
Yes.
Or so they're coming every day? So it's not something they do from home or anything like that? It is?
They are issued chrome books, so they can do additional work outside of school, but all of their tests and quizzes and things have to be with the teacher.
Okay. And I'm still not sure I understand what the moving on group is. Who are they in separate from SWEAP and separate from center schools? Like, I'm somehow not getting this.
Well, central schools, it's kind of the arching title.
I'm sorry, Center House.
Oh, okay.
Center House and SWEAP, I get.
Yes.
So who's moving on?
The moving on are the students who need that therapeutic type setting. We have two social workers up there that supports. We have behavior interventionists that they're supporting as well. And that was the group of students where I said mostly have an emotional disability, a significant learning disability, or other health impairments.
So they're here, there is a program here.
Mm-hmm. They're both on, they're on the fourth floor with SWEAP. SWEAP is at the end of the hall on the fourth floor.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
Hallie. Who I forgot to introduce earlier, Hallie, I'm sorry. Hallie Furtick, our student board member.
So this is mainly out of curiosity, but with Dream Academy, do you actually have the data on how many students transition back into their main high schools? Or do you not know that off the top of your head?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly follow up and get that to you.
Okay, and then again, just again, out of curiosity, do you guys have any programs or like putting programs in place to increase these numbers? Or do these numbers kind of fluctuate? Or have you found anything that helps to get them back to their original high schools?
Well, I would say the focus of all of our alternative programs really is to build skills and capacity for students to function at their greatest potential. So for some students, they do tend to thrive in that smaller environment, and that really is where they're performing best. And for some students, it really is about just taking the time to help them develop some coping skills and some strategies to be able to function at their best potential at the comprehensive. So really, it kind of is, depends on the student.
Thank you.
John?
Just a quick comment. I had the opportunity to witness a number of Dream Academy students speak in front of the Illinois State Board of Education last November. And it was really remarkable. It made me, you know, beyond proud to be part of this and know that we're offering these services to these students and giving them that extra set of resources to, you know, really succeed and not just change lives, but literally save lives. So it's really important stuff. So thank you.
And I want to also say that I've visited the Dream Academy and Center House and SWEAP, and it's, those are great programs. The transition graduation is always really rewarding, really worth going to. I had a couple of questions. One is, for the central programs, a child could, might go to, might attend SWEAP one year, but could go to Center House the next. I mean, they could do multiple programs, is that correct?
Yes, if the students are in SWEAP and they've built up that level of independence, we do have a conversation, and if they're ready to move on to Center House, then we would do that as well.
Okay, I thought so because again, going back to the transition graduations, I know they often mention they've been in SWEAP, they've been to Center House.
And there may be some students who are in a classroom at South Elgin as well. Maybe they're a couple of years that have built up those skills by running the popcorn business or some other things at the school that they are at that level of independence to transfer over to SWEAP.
And for the children in the therapeutic day school, I assume we provide transportation for that? Sounds like we have to by law anyway, but we should.
Yes, we provide transportation to everyone to the appropriate school.
Okay. And one final question. What, when a child, a student leaves a Dream Academy, what determines whether they're ready to go back? And do we try to do it on like a semester or a quarter break so they don't end up in the middle of the?
Sure, yeah, anytime that we're transitioning back, it's going to be generally at the beginning of the school year or at the semester. When we, any student that's enrolling in an alternative program, the first step is the intake process, which is a meeting between the homeschool, the Dream Academy staff, the parents, and the student. And at that meeting, we'll discuss some of the immediate goals, some of their long-term goals, and we'll set some of that criteria for how are we going to know that you're ready to transition back? Then we have transition meetings prior to that transition with, again, the homeschool, parents, students, and Dream Academy staff to have that discussion and make sure that the supports are in place at the homeschool to support that transition. And there's also a transition specialist, and this is her main role, is supporting that and following up with the students once they're back at their homeschool.
Great, okay, thank you. Are there other questions? John?
Just one thing, you know, sort of picking up on what Hallie mentioned. And obviously, there's an array of definitions of success in each of these programs. So beyond, you know, just enrollment figures, it would be interesting to see some of the information on how we evaluate, you know, we're doing a good job. You know, I have no doubt we are, but to see that, you know, something like the credit recovery would sort of be easy, right? We get someone in, are they able to recover, you know, by such and such time? And whatever targets are set. Other ones might be more difficult, like I said, to measure what that definition of success is. But something to show, you know, besides the anecdotal stuff that I've seen, you know, which is fantastic, that shows that we're doing the right things and a good job.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next strategic plan report is Alignment Collaborative for Education. I appreciate the team's willingness to be here this evening. Coming forward to present, I know there's a large audience here, but we can't fit everybody up here at the dais. So I know coming up to present, we'll include at least Nancy Coleman, Executive Director of Alignment Collaborative for Education, Pete Sikorsky, the Chair of ACE, Mayor Craig of Hanover Park, and Ms. Valdez, Assistant City Manager from the City of Elgin, I know are least slated to come on up. And I think the PowerPoint's set up for you. And I think, if not, you can re-present on alternative education.
I think, I thought that was an outstanding presentation, but we would be ill-equipped to do that tonight.
Well, thank you for the introduction, Tony. As I take a quick look around, I'd say about half the people in this room have been involved with alignment or are currently involved with alignment in some way, shape, or form. Just to introduce some of the folks, I don't want to be remiss to the U46 staff members, but some of the non-U46 folks here. Mayor Craig from the Village of Hanover Park. Andrea Fox behind me, President of Image Design Marketing. Sarah Sabo from Gale Borden Library. Laura Valdez-Wilson from the City of Elgin. I am the Executive Vice President at Get Fresh Produce, which is a local produce distributor. I have about 500 employees, and most of my employees have students that are in U46. So I'm going to turn this over to Nancy. We're going to give you guys an update on what alignment has been doing for the last several months and kind of a preview of what's to come.
All right, perfect. Just wanted to quickly give you an update on alignment's work scope. That work scope has not changed from its inception. There are three primary focus areas for alignment. One is early education preparation. The second one is looking at elementary, middle, and high school trauma-informed care. And the third one, educational pathways to post-secondary careers. Let's talk first about early education, the progress there. I always feel ill-equipped to talk about this one also because we have so many community partners in the room that do an outstanding job with early education every day. We were fortunate to participate with those partners to receive one of three grants in Buy First Books, which allowed us to put 20,200 books into children's hands within the last few months. $25,000 of those books are actually going to U46, but we were able to use the remaining of those books to help organizations across the board. It was also a big hit at the food bank in the summertime to receive books while you were there. So many children actually took their first library home, which was very rewarding to us. It also helped us strengthen that summer reading program that was started with an Elgin Township grant. This was a pilot program at Cornerstone Park and Isaac Walton Park to start a summer reading initiative. Again, we have summer reading initiatives across the community. That's not the point. The effort here was to take it to a non-traditional setting where we had resources coming in, where we might attract children that we are not able to attract through our traditional programs. And then the final award that is just now underway is the Kane County Fit for Kids. That is a partnership between the Elgin Partnership for Early Learning and the City of Elgin. And our goal there is to take the theme of fitness and early education and tie it together and change the way that parks look that makes it an educational experience as well as a playground. So we're excited about that. And we appreciate very much the City of Elgin and the investment that they have made in Festival Park to make that wonderful park available to us for this pilot. And then trauma-informed care. We're excited to have John Heiderscheidt with us today. Christine Argue also heads up that A-team to actually help us with the trauma-informed care implementation. As many of you are aware, we started out with a pilot of five schools in 2017-18. John and Christine have expanded that group to 26 resiliency teams in the schools. The goal right now is to continue to build the strength of those resiliency teams, get more resources from the community to those teams where there are gaps and where they've identified needs. I'm not going to tell you that we have done this on an optimal scale at this point. We do need to put more resources there to support John and Christine in their work in that area. And then the final area, which has gotten the most attention, is educational pathways and work-based learning. We're excited about this. As we all know, the educational pathways program is absolutely critical that we have the work-based learning piece. You see on this slide, the growth in the number of students served. We actually, last year, were able to serve 2,000 high school students, a little over that, and a little over 4,000 middle school students. That is a combination of things that you're very aware of, like the Explore event that is coming up this week. But it also includes participating in career panels, career classroom presentations, industry tours, job shadowing, internships, all the things that we need to be piloting to be sure that when educational pathways is fully rolled out by U46, we have the supporting community piece. So a lot of capacity required to be built in a short period of time. And then just wanted to invite you again to everything that's going on this week. We are looking forward to the community and exhibitor reception tomorrow evening at 5:00. Then that will be followed by the parent showcases. Will be the first time that Explore has invited all parents. So we're excited about that. We're getting really good feedback from the community on having the parents there. And then the whole student exploration experience will begin on September 11th. The first team of eighth graders will come at 10:00 and the second group right around 12:00. So we're looking forward to it. We spent the day over there. Sears Center is full of tables. So we're looking forward to filling it with students also. Would like to turn it over to Peter now to talk more about the overall 18, 19 year and the contribution alignment made back to the community.
Thank you. So if we think about alignment, I guess, oversimplistically, and why we're in the strategic planning section of this presentation, the concept of early education, trauma-informed care, and educational pathways are all key to the strategic plan for the district. And the district has a ton of people from the outside world that are interested in what's going on, possibly want to tell you what they think that you should be doing. And so we are, in essence, an organization trying to act as a filter to that. If you're somebody that's interested in learning more about these areas of where the district is spending time and trying to advance, then you come to alignment, and then we try to help you fit in to where you can most benefit. And both most understand what's going on, both provide the biggest benefit to the district, but do it in a way that still ties into the strategic plan. So if you think about us, we're kind of a collective that takes all of these volunteers across business, civic, nonprofit, municipality, and tries to pull them all into the same direction. So when you look at this, total community volunteer hours, over 3,200 hours invested from all of the individuals that are associated with alignment, whether that's at the governing board level, the operating board level, various committees, et cetera. If we flip to how we're funded, if you look at it in total, about 43% of alignment's funding currently comes from corporate and foundations. And that is a piece that we continue to increase. The business community, as you all know, is very, very broad. And the business community, even though alignment's been around for roughly five years, and I originally got involved kind of as a call to the business community, and I had some time on my hands, I'm trying to, and we're all trying to get other businesses involved in the same way. So this continues to be a place that has a lot of opportunity. The business community wants to be involved. Business community is also looking for fast results. That's one of the harder things because, of course, the work that we're doing is more multi-year type of work. But getting the business community to understand that and how they can plug in and both be involved with what's going on with the school district as well as help enhance what's going on, that continues to be a big part. So 43% is really coming from corporate organizations and corporate foundations. Of course, school district U46 still sponsors us to the tune of about 28% of our operating budget. And then from there, it's other individual gifts and community organizations that provide our operating budget. So from here, when we look at the hard dollars in terms of, you know, what are we bringing back to, what are we bringing back to school district U46? If we went back three years ago and were speaking with you, it was a lot more nebulous in terms of trying to identify a dollar figure that we are bringing back to school district U46. But as expected, as our work continues to gain momentum, we're able to actually have a lot of different wins and actually bring back some hard dollar return to the school district. So if you look at those volunteer hours, we talked about those $3,200, or 3,200 hours, that's an estimate of about $105,000 of time, and that's at a very low hourly rate. If we think about the grant programs that alignment is able to go after and sponsor, that's about $96,000. That includes some of the things that Nancy had mentioned before. The first books program, about $25,000 directly to U46 from that. The summer reading pilot, about $7,500. AT&amp;T had sponsored some STEM activities. NiCor sponsoring the expo. And that doesn't include the $12,000, that's the Fit for Kids, which is coming up here and really outside of this fiscal year. So on top of that, when you look at the direct investment, alignment helps defer, the alignment organization helps defer the hard dollar cost of having the expo at the Sears Center and coordinating the expo. About 30% of the alignment organization's time, staff time, is spent on. About 30% of the Alignment organization's time, staff time, is spent on putting together the expo along with Alignment picking up some of the actual hard-dollar line items. And so we estimate the hard dollars at about $10,500. But that does not include the 30% or so that we would estimate that our two staff members spend on coordinating the expo. So then from there, you know, just kind of wrapping up my piece of this, the last year, School District U-46 supported us to the tune of a $51,000 donation. It's been about a year since we've been in front of you asking for that. And we're just asking for your support again at that level for this coming year. We believe that we can continue to build momentum within the community, particularly the corporate organizations, that'll continue to take U-46's piece of the pie and drive that down. But nevertheless, we are really at the cusp of doing some great things, particularly in educational pathways. And that so directly ties into the strategic plan for the district. We're hoping we can continue to get that support this coming year. Okay, so I'll turn it over to Laura. So of course, the City of Elgin, along with Village of Hanover Park, have been huge supporters. And the City of Elgin's made a multi-year commitment to the Alignment organization, which we greatly appreciate. So Laura, feel free to take over.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us here tonight. So I am, like you mentioned, the Assistant City Manager for the City of Elgin. I'm also an operating board member, and I'm here on behalf as well for Mayor Captain, who he certainly would have loved to have been here, but he had another family obligation too that took him away. But I just want to start by saying we're really proud of the partnership that the City of Elgin has with U-46 and then with Alignment. As many of us are very aware, Mayor Captain was the one who convened the education summit back in 2013 to really have that conversation about what can we do as communities to make sure that we continue on this forward momentum of path of making sure that our future is as successful as possible. And that starts with our children. And so, you know, through all these years, I mean, five years, some days it seems like it's been a very long time. And sometimes it seems like it's just, you know, flashed by very quickly. But in that time, we've really seen a lot of work that's been done, not only from the community, the business groups coming together, the community organizations coming together, volunteers, School District U-46. I mean, sitting on a seat where I'm in the operating board, I continue to see every single time we meet and all those different conversations that we have in between all of our meetings, of the very hard work that's being done and the challenging questions that are being asked and the coming together to have conversations, to look at how we can continue to do things better. So in these last five years, the City of Elgin, we have funded, we started to, we actually gave seed money essentially at the beginning to fund the Start of Alignment Collaborative for Education back in 2014. We gave $15,000 annually for several years. And then in 2018, so just last year, City Council approved a three-year agreement. We increased that to $20,000 a year for 2018, 2019, and 2020. And it's really, truly because of the work that we continue to see. I mean, education is truly probably the most critical foundational element of any community. It's what we look at, you know, when families are looking to relocate, to locate to a community, when organizations and businesses are looking to locate their jobs, they're looking at the workforce that's available, they're looking at the pipeline that's coming into their businesses. And I'll tell you, I mean, the work that Alignment is doing along with U-46, it's truly moving us in the right direction. So the City of Elgin will continue to work on whatever we need to do to make sure that our students are taken care of in the future. So I think with that, Mayor Craig, I believe you're up next.
And I'm always bashful for something to say. Thank you all for inviting us tonight. And I want to thank, you know, my board is committed to supporting the Alignment. We've been committed to supporting the Educational Work Net Center. When we talk about pathways, that's at a different whole level of first-level education through learning to speak, the language, get your GED. Those are a number of things. And Alignment is in alignment with all of that. The City of Elgin took the lead to start this. When they came out with a funding process about, hey, we can provide so much, which boils down to about so much per student, well, that worked out really well for us. And we've tried to provide that kind of leadership by inviting the 11 community mayors to a breakfast to try to instill the energy and the commitment of the business community. If a mayor can step up to his business community and say, we need your support, I think that goes a long way in saying that we're behind this. I have a board. I have a commitment from my board. Herb Porter is here with me. It's a name you're probably all familiar with because he's here because his wife's in Hawaii enjoying some time. But our commitment to Alignment is with understanding that we have to sustain this for the long term. And sometimes when I say sustainability, it sounds like, oh, this is a status quo thing. This is not. Within our sustainability, we have to look at the progress, the growth, and the challenges to take on new things. And so I appreciate being invited to come along tonight. You know, being one of 11 communities, Hanover Parks has a community with seven school districts that touch our community. And it's like, holy smokes, what bucket did my step in it? But this morning, I want you to know that at Ontarioville School, where I've been integrating, I don't know what you call it, going and talking with the teachers, the first graders for over five or six years, the kids really love it. And today, I had a new component. Usually, it's first graders. I'm reading to them and I'm asking them questions, but talking about what it means to be responsible, respectful. Do you feel safe in your community? And so today, the teacher said, I'd like to try the social studies kind of thing. And I said, really? What is that? Well, she had the mayor, the governor, and the president. She thought kind of convey that and looking at the city, looking at the state, and then looking at the country. You know, I'm very proud of that. You've got marvelous teachers out there, and we've got to find a way to sustain it, to support this, and to continue on. And the Alignment is doing a great job. And this gentleman to my right, he's way over the top, and I really appreciate that. So I'm really glad also that Herb came to support me tonight because together, we're on that. I forget what team you call it, but we're together and we're supportive. And if one can't be here, the other shows up. So thank you very much.
concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Other questions? I have a suggestion. I know you put together an annual report, and I know there were limited copies. But if we have a PDF version, I think it would be useful for the board to see that and perhaps your budget for this year.
Did you all receive copies?
Or did we get that? Okay, maybe you got it. Okay, good. We're all set then.
So Ms. Kerr had posed a number of questions that we appreciate you answering, and some supplemental information was really appreciated, so.
I will be sure everybody gets the PDF copy because I constantly get requests.
Oh, I think we did. I just didn't see that.
It's out here for them. It's actually publicly available down on the website.
Oh, good. All right.
It's the first item under Enclosures now, item 21A, as the supplemental documents, financial statements, annual reports.
Okay, there we are.
And some Q and A.
I didn't even see this. There we are. Okay. And just to reiterate, one of the questions I asked was, you know, how we get other, you know, there is a lot of Elgin focus, which there's nothing wrong with that. But I sometimes worry that Bartlett and Streamwood, I don't see them as involved. And although Bartlett did have the internship this summer, so.
Well, actually, we have put a good bit of work-based learning into Bartlett. Bartlett probably has had more emphasis on work-based learning because of having the STEM Academy. Oh, sorry. And because they already had a 40-hour internship requirement. And I want to just sort of pat Mike on the back at Bartlett because he's the first one that said, we need help finding meaningful placement for students. And so this year, we could have even placed more, but we did place the first 25. And when two students get to go to Nycor and other students get to go to Elgin-Sweeper and Village of Bartlett, and you have all of this Array HLR, if you're interested in civil engineering, they took eight, and the students actually worked on U-46 projects. You can't replicate, it's hard to replicate that in a classroom. You can reinforce it, you can teach all the basics, but that kind of brings it all together. One student, I went to the presentations last week, and he says, I realized I did not want to be a civil engineer. And I said, what did I tell you all about internships? He said, what you don't want to do as much as it is what you want to do. He says, I didn't like that standing out in a road. And it was 90 degrees. I said, then we'll find you an office to work in. So it does. But if he had not had that experience, I don't know that he would understand to be a really good civil engineer. That kind of effort is required. So it was interesting to see the students present this week. And last week, they've done an outstanding job.
And I think internships are so valuable. And I would hope that, you know, you're marching into some of these business parks and going to business saying, no, we don't need money, but we'd love internships, possibilities for kids to have internships because we have so many fascinating businesses in this area that people probably don't think about or know about.
We could have easily placed 50 students this summer. We were just worried from an administrative standpoint, since we had not done it before. I didn't want to over-commit and over-extend. So we did the 25 just to see how it works. The feedback from those companies, outstanding.
Great. Other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the continued commitment to U-46 and our strategic plan, too.
All right, next, comments from the audience, public comments.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We are now at the public comment portion of the meeting when the board listens to issues and concerns but does not respond to statements. We ask that you complete a request to speak card. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes. A tone will sound when the time is up for each speaker. If you wish to have a reply to your concern or question, please check the box on the card and a written reply will be mailed to you. Bienvenidos a la reunión de la Junta Educativa. En este momento venimos al público la oportunidad de hacer comentarios. Es ahora que la Junta Educativa escucha preocupaciones y preguntas pero no da respuesta. Le pedimos que lleno la tarjeta para solicitar su turno para hablar. Cada orador tiene hasta tres minutos para presentar su tema. Cuando escuche el timbre, su tiempo habrá terminado. Si usted desea obtener respuesta a su pregunta e inquietud, por favor indíquelo en la tarjeta y le enviaremos la respuesta por correo. Gracias.
Do you have any speakers, any requests to speak cards? I think we have to have Mary, what I have. You know, sir, if you'd like to fill it out afterwards, it didn't come up to speak first, we can do that.
If you don't mind sharing your name and first last name with everybody. I know who you are.
My name, Demetrius Smith. I graduated U-46 Elgin High. I first want to apologize to all the U-46 four for dressing the way I am today. I was working today, so I wasn't able to dress as fashionably as Mr. Sanders here. But yeah, today, I come today because what's going on at Larkin High School with that Officer Varga, Vega, or whatever his name is, it hit home back in December. And we went to the police department with it because what he did was, my little nephew, and I'm going to get into the story why he's here, because I just had enough standing at Streamwood High School football game against Larkin, and of course, we lost that day. It just, I mean, they are turning good kids and trying to like place them up under this, you know, this bad boy stigma. Now, I for certain, I'm listening to the Central. I went to Central High School because I really was, I really was very bad as a child. I can't, nobody can lie for me on that part. But these kids, I mean, no gang contact, no fights. I mean, my nephew, I mean, he excelled in every program. Steven Maske, you look him up. He doesn't even, I mean, hang with younger crowd guys. He always be around nothing but a lot of females, and I'd be torturing about that. But my point is this is, the police there is targeting these little kids, turning gang members and sickened police officers onto their houses. And he did it to my nephew Steven back in December. Never once did he contact the father about anything. This was three months after the fact the police come to his grandmother's house and surrounded with flashlights and everything, wanted to search his room. So when his grandmother, which is my brother's mother, because we got the same father, called, you know, the dad about this, he instantly get over there, but the detectives are already gone. He called me, so we all go to the police station. We get down there, they act like it's a top secret. So after forcing them and putting the complaint and everything else, they finally showed us the pictures, three pictures, and of course, we all know what Fortnite is. Now, one picture had a gang sign, especially not a Midwest gang sign. It was, each hand had different signals, none of it consistent. So I said, so where were the foul play at? What gang signs are they throwing? They couldn't say none because it doesn't exist. It's just the Fortnite, the game thing. And like I say, three pictures and six signals, because each one, he got his fingers moving on each picture, and none of it consistent. So I asked him, why do they sic the police on his house? They don't have no reason. They are like trying to create these scenarios and cases for these little kids. They target his, well, I don't speak on his son, but his son, the same thing. Never ever had an incident, but they making, they trying to create these situations with these kids that is not involving no gangs. They excel in everything, but let the school get done with them. They're going to, you know, mess their jacket up to where they're going to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Since we don't have a card yet, if you could say your name also for the record for your three minutes.
How you doing? My name, Jeffrey Ligon. And I'm here today, like Demetrius was saying. Okay, so my son Friday was suspended. He goes to Larkin High School. He's a sophomore at Larkin High School. 20 minutes, he plays for the football team, the varsity football team. 20 minutes before school was over, eighth period, he was called into the office, said that they seen him on camera. They seen him on camera in the hallways during passing period, throwing up a gang sign. So they told him that he will be, he will not play in the game Friday night, and he was suspended for two days for what they assumed to be a gang sign. At this time, I happened to be right around the corner. I was at the movie theater with my wife. So I get the call. I immediately go up to Larkin High School. My issue is, I believe that the principal, also Mr. Masika, Assistant Principal, he targets, he's targeting certain kids up in there. What I want to know is, I was listening to what they were saying about their programs with alternative. What programs or policies do we have in place to avoid them even going to those alternative schools? Like, okay, what lesson will a kid learn by you just automatically suspended them, sending them home? And it wasn't only this year, it happened last year as well. Just why it's to the point where it's like, I'm fed up because it's, to me, I feel you're gonna, you're trying to mentally destroy my son to believe he's a bad kid when he's not. He got suspended last year for almost fighting for two days because they said he could have excited a riot. I let that go with a grain of salt. Last year also, my son, he was talking to girls, he a ladies' man. He was playing with a girl in the hallway. They say on camera during peasant period, they saw him slap her. He assisted. I didn't slap her. You slapped her. You're suspended. So he kind of argued with the Mr. Masika. And they called me, sent them home. Come to find out, the girl came, told him like, no, he didn't slap me, we was playing. So it was all a misunderstanding. So where is their training to handle these kids? Because I hear what they're saying about the kids going to the Dream Program or the Central Program or whatever it is. That's just because the teacher or the assistant or the dean's deemed this person is a problem, suspend him, suspend him, suspend him. Now they're going to this alternative school, that's not right. What programs do we have in place to help these kids, you know? And I'm speaking on all kids, not just my son. We need programs in place to help them avoid going to these alternative schools, you know? And it just, I'm to the point where it's just, I'm fed up with it. I love my son, and I would do anything to make sure that he's not labeled as some thug because he's not. I didn't raise him like that, and he's not, don't get me wrong, kids be kids, but I know my son, so.
So I'm going to ask, I'll have staff members follow up with you out in the hallway. So I'm going to ask, I'll have staff members follow up with you out in the hallway. We've got Mr. Hyderscheidt is the liaison for all of our school resource officers. He works with the police department. He's our Director of School Safety and Culture. And Lela Mistorvik is our Assistant Superintendent over secondary schools, and she doesn't mind stepping out as well to have a conversation, just to make sure that we can follow up with you both gentlemen on what's happening. And then if you're, tell your son to send me an email and I'll come over and have lunch with them.
Then I just want to, I know my time, but it was also Friday at the football game, some girl got on a picture supposedly was throwing up a gang sign. She had only in-school suspension to date. So my thing is, do the punishment fit the crime, right? So if it's gonna be this way, it should be that way for everyone, not pick and choose.
Yep. Yep, we will follow up, I promise you. And then if you don't mind, just making sure we have the comment card. Mary will collect those from you, that way we can put interim into the record as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Demetrius, thank you.
Who, 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 who do you signal out?
Do we have one more, Mary? Okay. If you could state your name as well and fill out the comment card at the end.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Ron Milner, and I'm a former resident of Elgin. I lived here from nineteen eighty-six to about two thousand and six. And the reason I want to address the board is because I was listening to the group talk about the early intervention for kids. My first daughter, Sydney, was born in nineteen ninety-five, and at the age of two weeks, she had to have open heart surgery, and they discovered all types of abnormalities in her body. And so she had to have early intervention, which we get through U forty-six School District. She had a second surgery at the age of about ten. When she was first born, the doctors told her she would never walk, she would never talk, she wouldn't do much of anything. But my wife oversaw her intervention, and I'm here to tell you what happened to this kid now. She's twenty-four years old. She's a great kid. The intervention has been tremendous. Her whole life is opened up. My wife worked in conjunction with U forty-six at first, and then Sycamore High School where we currently live. This kid is the most independent kid I've ever seen in my life. My wife has taught her how to bathe, how to get up in the morning. She has a job, she lives on her own in her own apartment. About five years ago, my wife got her an iPad, and I didn't think she'd be able to use it. The iPad opened up her world. Her whole personality came out in her iPad. I couldn't believe this kid, she has a sense of humor, she's funny, she's amazing. And I'm here to say that it's important that the parents work with the school districts and help these kids because there are no dumb kids, there really aren't. And I am proud that I was here and my kid got that intervention. I don't take any credit for it because my wife was just on the spot, just making sure that kid got everything she needed. And we loved living here in Elgin. We hated to leave, but we had to. And I'm here to say that you guys are doing great work, don't ever give up on these kids, and you'd just be amazed. And my youngest daughter, who's nineteen, is more dependent than my oldest kid who has disabilities. It's just amazing. So these kids are a godsend, I love them, and I can't say enough good things about Elgin. And I'm here for a lot of different reasons, but that's something I want to talk to you about. Thank you very much. You're doing good work.
Thank you very much.
And all the best to your family.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, let me go back where we are. We are at other business, board member and CEO update. Any updates?
Well, you know about this one. Sue and I had a great weekend. We were docents for the Elgin House Tour.
Yes.
We had all sorts of fun. I can tell you all about yellow pine and window trim now.
Faux wood.
Faux wood, you were upstairs, right? But it was just really a fun experience. We met U forty-six employees that were happy to see us, and yeah, it was a great experience. So if you've never been to the Elgin House Tour, I highly recommend that you go next year, even better volunteer, because it was quite a bit of fun.
You know, maybe it's not important to a lot of people, but it is Streamwood High School's Homecoming Week. So yeah, that started today, and tonight we have our powder puff game, which I promised to shout out because I could unfortunately not come to support, but I'm here in spirit. So yeah, I just wanted to mention that because it's such a good time for school spirit to come out that you don't see like during the normal course of the school year, so.
And the school looks great for it, too. They went all out.
Thank you. I've tried very hard in my decorations, so thank you.
I've been hearing regular updates in my house, too. Juniors think they're gonna win this year, so.
Lies.
I'm just saying, juniors.
Our hallway is so much better. It's nineteen twenties theme, in case you needed to know.
Anyone else? And I should mention, the house that Kate and I were at, we're docents at for the house walk, is owned by the former Chair of CAC. So that was very cool. Okay, any?
The only thing we have under other business, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, just taking my notes. I like to highlight that, I don't think it's in our upcoming activities, but on September twentieth, U forty-six CEO Tony Sanders will be acting as honorary drum major at Bartlett High School football game. So Bartlett High School has decided to implement this year an honorary drum major in each of the remaining home games.
I did it for the outfit.
It was part of the zip mandatory, because I'm scheduled on October twenty-fifth. So the schedule includes Mr. Sanders on September twentieth, Principal Mike Demovski on the twenty-seventh, October eighteenth is U forty-six Fine Arts Coordinator, Mr. Aldo, and then for some reason, me on October twenty-fifth. So looking forward to that, of course.
Okay. Foyers.
So there, by Freedom of Information Act request, we've responded to since the last board meeting, they're available on board docs and will also be posted on the district's website this upcoming week.
Okay, any questions about the foyers? Consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, August twelfth, twenty nineteen, termination of Danielle Chavez, noon hour supervisor, termination of Yadana Arroyo Contreras, para educator, termination of Paul Lee, bus driver, termination of Patrick Risper, para educator, termination of Leslie Vega, secretary, a resolution authorizing individuals to act on behalf of the plan, a contract for school and community relations with Blackboard, proposal from specialized student services and information services for a technology purchase, proposal from curriculum instruction, Title One Technology Phase One purchase, and finally occupancy permits including Centennial Elementary School Project one nine zero two seven, Centennial Elementary Schools Project, U forty, Project U forty-six PN five seven five and MSAP PN eighteen forty-six, Clinton Elementary School Project six fifty-one and eighteen forty-seven, Clinton Elementary School Project number six fifty-two and eighteen fifty-one, Nature Ridge Elementary School Project twelve twenty-five for parking lot and driveway improvements, Parkwood Elementary School Project thirteen twenty, Prairie View Elementary School Project thirteen fifty-one, Sycamore Trails Elementary School Project fourteen seventy-seven, Willard Elementary School Project nine seventy-eight and eighteen fifty-three, Abbott Middle School Project three fifty-four and eighteen fifty, Kenyon Woods Middle School Project four fifty-one and eighteen seventy-seven, Larson Middle School Project one nine zero two seven, Tef Middle School Project five twenty-nine and eighteen forty-nine, Elgin High School Project two thirty-three and eighteen forty-eight, Elgin High School Project two thirty-four and eighteen fifty-two, Elgin High School Project two thirty-five and eighteen fifty-five, Larkin High School Project two sixty-one, library remodelings including Project twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-five, twenty thirty-six, and that included Bartlett High School, Larkin High School, and South Elgin High School. Lockdown Hardware Phase Four, Project twenty forty-eight, Lockdown Hardware Phase Five and Fire Alarm Replacement, Project number twenty forty-nine, South Elgin High School Project number two seventy-five, Plan Operations Distribution Center, Project twenty fifty-three and eighteen sixty, Transportation Building Office Renovation, Project twenty fifty-one, Educational Services Center, Project three twenty-nine, and for multiple sites, Project one nine zero two seven flooring replacement.
Are there any items on the consent agenda people like removed? All right. All right, hearing that, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So approved, or so moved. Sorry. Second.
Roll call, please.
Discussion, sorry, discussion, questions?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved six zero.
Discussion, discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills for September ninth, twenty nineteen. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of six million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Could I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of six million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-seven cents?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Our next discussion action item are minutes of the board committee meetings. Administration recommends the Board of Education accept the minutes of the August twelfth, twenty nineteen Board of Education Finance Committee minutes.
Could I have a motion to accept the Board of Education Finance Committee meeting minutes of August twelfth, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved six zero.
Other business, CAC update? CAC. I know CAC's first meeting is on Thursday.
Thursday night, Elgin High School, seven o'clock. Buy your tickets early.
All right, other business, Mr. Sanders.
Under other business, before we get into the work session, the board has asked in the past for updates and for presentations on the request for proposal process, the bidding process that we go through, as well as information on prevailing wage and how that's calculated. And so Mr. Phelps has been kind enough to put together a presentation for the board before we get into the work session items, kind of explaining the proposals that the board sees that come through the bidding process. And then he took that opportunity one step further and is sharing with you in advance of this week's expo, some of the information he's going to be sharing out with students. So, right? You're taking advantage of the presentation to do this as well, which is great.
That's correct.
That's great marketing. So with that, Mr. Phelps.
So what we have over the left over here is what we're going to display to the students, and we're going to also have one of our trucks out over there with some of our staff members to show the students like what we do in the Business Services Center. Last year, we did this, we actually had a test for them, and we brought about nineteen of them over for a lunch and learn at the Business Services Department, gave them a tour of what happens behind the scenes, how does your stuff get to your school, how's it purchased, and stuff like that. So it just gave them a little bit of behind the scenes, what happens.
But it also shares out the total bids and RFPs published and data that actually aligns to this presentation, so.
That's correct.
You tied it all together. Very nice.
Okay, so I appreciate you guys allowing me to come forward to present the RFP and bid process, just to start off. So what we've got is, we've got a total bid, fifty-seven bids and RFPs that went out the last school year, with a total of contracts equating to eighteen million, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two, fifty-five cents. The total board bids approved were seventy-six million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eighty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Now, my next step will be is to go over the bid procedure, and what it is, is this ties to the Board Policy four point zero six zero, which is any items or materials or expenditures or work involved of twenty-five thousand dollars or more shall be bid out and brought to the board for approval. There are items that are not, that are exempt to this, and they're outlined in the actual board policy. I don't, I didn't bring those and itemize them as per se, but they are listed it there. Any construction that is fifty thousand dollars or more are required to bid out also, which is brought to you guys. The next step is the creation step. So what we have here is, we have, is the specifications are created, and if the project requires that we have a prevailing wage that's listed in the actual presentation to the RFP, so that the actual, they know how, what the work is being done and what is expected of them as far as submitting for prevailing wage. We create the legal ad. We also decide what the go-live date is. We create questions and answer dates for the vendors when they're submitting questions to us. We also have if some of our RFPs and bids require us to have a pre-meeting, which is what we'll do in the pre-meeting, is answer more questions and more details that are given on some of our complicated projects. And then we also have the evaluation criteria, how will we be grading them on the certain either purchase or service that we're RFP or bidding out? And they also identify the evaluation team. The next step is the publishing stage. We'll publish the legal ad, and I think I gave you guys a response to your question, gave you kind of like a little sample of what that looks like. And also, in that legal ad, it gives them the link to where they'll go and actually pull the bid documents, and they'll actually respond to the bidder RP. So the bid will go out two days after the legal ad is published in the public newspaper. The bid will stay open for a minimum of two weeks. Pre-bid meeting will be conducted if required between those, in that two-week period. Any questions submitted will be answered and posted on a public notice. So any questions that are submitted from the vendors, we accumulate them all, and then what we'll do is we'll put all the answers on one document, and we publish so that all the vendors can see what the questions were and what the answers were from every vendor. If there are any alterations during that process, what we'll do is we'll publish an addendum on the public notice so that all will see what that entails, what we've changed, either the timing or other the requirements on the RFP or bid. Next step is the public opening review stage. We conduct the public opening of the bid. In the current process, where the old process was, is we would be opening up envelopes, paper envelopes, where they supply the documentation, but it's all electronic now, and they're still able to come to a public opening and see that opening of the public bid. Now, the only difference would be is, is any construction is still required to be a sealed bid envelope. We are not allowed to do it electronically. We publish it electronically, but we cannot open it electronically. It has to be through a sealed bid envelope. The evaluation team submits their scores and recommendations. Lowest responsible vendor selection is communicated to the department head. And then we have is the Board of Education stage. The department head creates the board proposal, forwards it to me, and then I'll review it for completeness, and then that documentation and whatever else is assorted or supporting that is forwarded to the senior leadership, and the board proposal goes to the next board meeting for review, and at the second board meeting, you guys will take a vote on it. The only other step that is actually not part of the bid process, but is part of it, is actually where there is a, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, excuse me. We have the award stage. So now what we do is, instead of doing it via email or doing it by phone call or anything like that, it's all done electronically. Any vendor that submitted a bid to this bid, I will put in the bonfire a public notice of who was awarded, so they'll all receive an email of who was awarded the bid. If there's a contract, what we'll do is, is I will work with the vendor and the department to finalize the contract, and if we need to, we will also bring in the legal department for any help that we may need. And then the school department will enter requisition to the financial system to create a purchase order, and we will send the purchase order to the vendor via the Business Services Office. Now, as I jumped to a little earlier, when there, we have a special requirement, most of our construction projects require prevailing wage. So what we will do is, is the vendor knows in the bid documentation that they must submit, when they submit their invoice, they must submit the certified payroll. This is, what we will do is, we will verify the certified payroll against the work that's being completed from the payroll that's, I'm sorry, the wages that are published on the county websites. We will verify that they are paying them that wage. And then we will go ahead and take all that certified payroll, it will be documented with the project and with the bid also. At this time, this concludes the presentation.
Any questions? Melissa?
Just one question. What is the requirements for holding that pre-meeting? Is that something that is an internal requirement, or is that something that is legally required?
No, it's not legally required. What we do is, we try to have pre-meetings on some of the more complicated What we do is we try to have pre-meetings on some of the more complicated projects that might entail some, they might not quite understand what the verbiage is behind what we're trying to explain to them. And sometimes we're, we're also venturing in an area where we're not too aware of what's going on. So what is, it's kind of nice to have the pre-meeting because we can hear what they have to say and questions that they might have, that we might have to send out an addendum from that to get a better return on what the information we're requesting back.
Okay, so more of an exploratory meeting than to, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And are those pre-meetings just open for anybody who wants to go, like any of the, who attends the pre-meeting?
Okay, sure. So it's the staff members that are involved in the bid process, meaning myself and also any from the district's side, the department that it's coming from, and anyone that has responded to the bid or pulled the bid documents can come.
So a vendor theoretically could come and ask extra questions?
Anyone can come that pulls the bid.
Cool, thank you.
And we will state that in the RFP or bid documents if it's required, because sometimes we want to require, because we want to see who's going to bid out, who isn't interested in it.
So you do sometimes require that they attend that meeting?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
But it's stated in the bid documentation.
Awesome, thank you.
Other questions, Toby?
I just have one. Where can anybody go to see a listing of our current request for proposals or bid documents?
Sure. You can go on the school district website and their Business Services, and you'll see there where there's bids and RFPs. You just go to, click on that link, and it will take you to the bonfire link, which will then open up, and you'll see all the active open bids. And you can also look at the prior ones also. This will be our first full year with doing it entirely in the whole district construction and any other bids that we have. Last year was non-construction.
Donna?
Is that where you would find the answers to questions and stuff? On page four, you say, "Any questions submitted will be answered and posted as a public notice." Where do we post those public notices?
So what I mean by a public notice is, is I will go into Bonfire on that specific bid or RFP that we're posting the public notice on, and anyone that has pulled the bid has to register. So the system knows what their email address is, and when I post that publicly, they'll all get that email to them automatically.
Okay, but is there a place that like anyone could see it?
The only way that you would be able to see it is if you actually register on Bonfire, and then you go to that bid.
Okay, okay.
It's free.
So you can.
Register on Bonfire is totally free. There's no cost to it whatsoever.
You can, you just have to be registered.
Yes.
So you don't even have to be in business, you could be an individual and register?
Yes, anybody can register, doesn't matter. As long, on Bonfire, what they do is they use commodity codes. And when you register yourself, what you do is they have a lot, thousands of different commodity codes, that different, deal with different products, services and stuff like that. Then what you'll do is, is when you register yourself, you'll start, you'll start clicking on these commodity codes.
Okay.
Once you click on the commodity codes, or we publish a bid, we select the commodity codes. So then when we publish it, they'll automatically receive emails once we publish a bid under that commodity code.
So that's great for businesses, they could get all this information if they have a certain business and they, they
Yes.
They would get all the, all the open.
And this touches the entire, entire United States.
Wow.
Not just the local area, it's the entire United States.
John?
So over the last year, we've had a number of instances where we've only had a single bidder on a couple of.
We hope to improve that. We do, we hope to improve that.
And we hit.
With the capital planning, we have fifteen vendors that are, that are bidding on it, that came to the pre-meeting.
Great, good to hear.
So that was a very good turnout.
Good, good, good. And, you know, we, when we had discussed it, it was, you know, it's a sort of a good, strong economy, and so a lot of the work, there's more work than vendors available. So just want to make sure that, you know, we are doing, like you said, everything we can to make, you know, get as much interest and much.
And our goal is to get you the guys, the construction bids are going to go out earlier this year to get ahead of it.
One other quick question, I guess. Do you know how we're, we are viewed as a customer? I'm curious if there's ever any feedback, do, do we, one, do we get a lot of repeat vendors? So vendors that do certain.
Yes, we do.
They come back, so that's.
There's a lot of repeat vendors.
Just to make sure, you know, that we're sort of good and easy to do business with to the extent that, that we can.
I believe that the district, we have a policy of third-day turnaround of their invoices. So I think out of any, a lot of your public entities, I think that's a really good turnaround of them getting paid. They're not, they're not carrying that debt for a long period of time.
And just out of curiosity, why are construction bids still sealed envelopes rather than?
It's a state requirement.
It's a state requirement?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions?
It also tied to our Freedom of Information Act request that even though the vendors get, here's who was awarded, you still get all these aside vendors who then reach out and say, "I still want to see the final documentations that were submitted by whatever the, the winning bid was."
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, very informative. Unfortunately, our first work session item is not a bid or proposal. It's a resolution adopting the School District U forty-six budget July first, two thousand and nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. I shouldn't say unfortunately because a lot of work went into it. Right?
Absolutely.
Not just your work, but, and Robin's work, but also the board's work, administrators' work, so a lot of people involved. So with the, it's the single most important thing, is that what you said? Okay. So with that, Mr. Bernage is joined at the dais. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting the School District U forty-six budget July first, two thousand and nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, corresponding with the public hearing that we just held earlier this evening, and also noting that the final budget book will be presented to the board in its final form by the end of September, when we vote, with the next meeting.
Any questions?
Thanks, thank you, Del. Our next is a contract renewal for early learners initiatives with One Hope United Elgin Child and Family Resource Center. Coming forward to join Mr. Phelps at the dais is Dr. Carpenter, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Ms. Peggy Andera, Director of Early Learner Initiatives. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with One Hope United in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the FY twenty preschool for all grant and is included in the budget for the year. And I'll note that actually Ms. Andera is going to stay over there because, yeah, she's got a lot going, okay.
Are there any questions?
Our next is a contract for the Deputy Superintendent of Instruction with Catapult Learning. This was referenced in the earlier presentation. Joining at the dais is Dr. Johnson, Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. Administration recommends approval of the three-year contract with Catapult Learning not to exceed the amount of one million, four thousand, four hundred dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budget for the next three fiscal years.
Are there any questions? Okay, I had questions, okay, John, John, Kate.
So I just wanted to ask, and maybe this isn't the, the kind of thing that does it, but typically when there's curriculum, we get to see books and, and all that. Is there not software or books or lesson plans or something to go with it? Oh, is it?
So, so I can, I can certainly provide that information for you as well. So when they submitted the proposal, we have, we have all of that information. But a few things just in, in short, if I can, to try to, try to give you a little bit more information with us. So thanks to the help of Mr. Phelps, we did walk through this RFP process about a year ago because we knew that we needed to do some research and see what other providers were out there that we might not be familiar with. And through that process and the review of our own practices, we identified that we really were looking for this interim, interim alternative educational setting for specifically for us, our K-eight students. We feel as though we have appropriate resources in high school, assisted for our K-eight students, many of whom have exhibited level-two threats to either harm themselves or others, and that's either due to the severity of a threat or something that's been happening on an ongoing, regular basis that would indicate that in our current setting and our current practices, we're not best meeting the needs of that student. So we look for that interim placement, as indicated, to be able to provide an opportunity for our sites to gather the training, the resources, and put some strategies in place at the site, and also support the student in acquiring those strategies and families as well so that they can be most successful within our School District U forty-six classrooms. Again, the goal being to try to keep our students within our settings as long as they're able to be safe and, and meet, and meet their, their progress. And so it's utilizing an in-district classroom model, and we would be looking for three classrooms to be able to support K-two students, grades three, four, and five, and six through eight. It's approximately eight to twelve students in each classroom at the most at any one time, capped though to no more than thirty total students. And that's really to be able to provide then that individualized student instruction, both academically and socially and emotionally. And so they utilize one-to-one instruction in both of those two large domains, academics and then also the social-emotional piece for our students. And it's also small group environment, independent work, and when appropriate, some online instruction and support for students provided that developmentally meets the needs of our students. Again, professional development for our teachers and also resources for parents. The component of the program that we really though appreciated was that the curriculum that they will utilize is really the U forty-six curriculum. So it's based on state standards, so common core standards, and implementation then of our curriculum and even utilizing our resources. So within the proposal, and I can share that with you, they'll highlight the resources that they have used most commonly, and some of them you're going to recognize because some of those resources are even resources that we utilize to meet, to teach our own students. The other benefit is that they also then, given that flexibility, are able to meet some of our different programming needs of our students. So dual-language programming needs, ESL programming needs, and certainly our students, if they are also participating in gifted programming and instruction as well. They're even able to, while the proposal will either allow for them to bring in professionally-educated licensed instructors, which is really important, or we can also work with our own teachers as well to do push-in, to provide instruction for our students also. So we can certainly, you know, provide that. The other piece, I know that the questions that we were receiving were around how will we measure success? And the success is really measured pretty significantly on an individualized basis for students because as was stressed with our other programming tonight, there is a transition into a program in which goals are established for our students, and then the transition plan back to our site or back to the most appropriate educational environment. We establish those goals for students, and we do look at things like consistently regulated behavior for both students who are externalizers and internalizers, either a significant reduction or elimination of aggressive, aggressive behavior, completion of work, active participation in school and in school practices, increased and maintained stable student attendance, compliance with school expectations, minimal redirection, satisfactory progress on a regular, ongoing basis towards individualized student goals, use of coping skills, and then successful transition back over a prolonged period of time either to what was the, the learning environment or to a new learning environment that is most appropriate for students. And so I can, I can make sure that we, we share that link and share those resources for you to be able to take a look at.
Please, thank you.
So just to be clear, sorry again if you just said this and I didn't quite pick it up. The expense is largely the staff that is, that, these are the contractors effectively coming into our schools, roughly ten, ten and a half, based on the previous presentation.
Correct, so.
That's what they're providing for this, this contract, the necessary resources in place to.
The bulk, the bulk of the cost is essentially to have other providers through Catapult Learning come in to provide the instruction for our students. So that would be teachers, that's also administration, behavior specialists, classroom assistants, and administrative assistant for the program. Our goal is really, again, we can push in and they are flexible. So if we can provide some of those resources, we can certainly do that. But we, again, want to be able to support the program, to provide oversight, to be able to monitor, increase communication, all the things that we struggle with when the program is not housed within one of our sites. We also though want to make sure that the site that houses the program is able to focus though on their primary responsibilities, which are the students who are already assigned to that attendance area and participating in the programs at that site. And so the cost that you see is, is predominantly that for the staff. The other aspects of cost would be for the additional workshops and, and training that they can provide for our staff to build capacity, and then also for the outreach to families.
Any other questions? Melissa?
What school are we looking at having this at? Do you know where you're going to places?
So we are tentatively researching Kimball Middle School for a placement of the program.
And that's because of space availability?
So part of it is due to space availability, also central location within the school district. So when we give consideration to transporting students throughout our ninety square miles, we feel that that, that's a, it's a pretty central location for many of our students that we would be potentially transporting.
It's not just space availability as well, it's also the configuration of the space that's available. So there's a, there's a little portion of the building that's, that's separate and apart from in, in some respects and is open and available.
Okay. So when we're looking at the total cost of this program, obviously, transportation costs are going to be part of that.
Transportation.
But we've been transporting students to other outside vendors for, for longer periods of time. So I don't know that you're going to see a significant increase in the budget for transportation. I think if any, you might see a reduction in transportation costs because we're centralizing.
So based on the last presentation, you know, that you gave earlier tonight, a lot of these students or some of these students were going over to places like Streamwood Behavioral, so we were doing the transportation for that, right? So that's, that's where we're going to see that centralization. So when you, when you talk about capacity and your, your three elementary or three classrooms, about thirty kids per classroom, right, so ninety students?
No, thirty, thirty students total at any one time. But keeping in mind, students are really limited to the duration of stay to approximately forty days in length. So again, when we talk about the numbers for enrollment, it's not a consistent or long-term placement.
Right.
It's really enough of an opportunity for us to assess the situation, provide opportunity for that acquisition, a strategy and skill and resource, or start to move towards a larger potential evaluation for appropriate placement for a student.
So approximately how many students do you think you're going to serve in a given year?
So during the seventeen, eighteen year, we identified that we had approximately eighty-six students who accessed interim alternative educational settings. Off and on, that could, that, that may have been some longer, some shorter. And we do know that, you know, that cost for that one year for that group of students was over six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Part of that again becomes though for us, when we talk about that piece around what can be the professional development, how can we improve our abilities to problem solve, to form teams, to provide the type of either one-on-one support for students or small group supports that are needed at our sites as well? We're really looking at that investment and some other work with teams and the resources we already have here to be able to improve our practices long-term on a regular basis within U forty-six. I think when we have looked at how we have outsourced either that completely by sending students to those placements in the past, what has become clear to us is that we still then are lacking in developing that ability to be able to support transition programming for students and to be able to support families here.
Right.
And we, we really, if we are going to do the work at an earlier age for our students to be successful long-term and acquire the types of strategies we need to keep them in our sites, we should be making this type of investment because long-term, it would be more efficient and also more fiscally responsible and better outcomes for kids, right? The end of the day, better outcomes and better opportunities for outcomes for kids.
Well, I appreciate that comparison to what, you know, we were doing outsourcing because that's an important component of looking at this entire program. What I'm hearing then is that going forward and, you know, looking beyond the three-year commitment for this one contract is that we're also looking at building the capacity of our staff so that we are able to, I would think, hopefully, provide some of these services then internally?
Absolutely.
Going beyond this contract, that, that's part of the student outcomes, obviously, is, is primary here, but then also building our capacity to be able to serve our, our students.
Correct.
In a better manner, too.
We identify that this again, as I, as I shared in the other, the first presentation, this is a gap in our practice. And this is a place where we. And this is a place where we need to identify how we can improve those services. It will take us some time to do this, and it's taken us some time. We've spent a lot, we've spent almost 15 months researching this in trying to identify how do we best move forward. And even by bringing you this proposal tonight, we don't flip a switch and start on October 1st, this is still for next year. And so by bringing this proposal forward tonight, it gives us then more opportunity to now be able to move forward with the planning around the curriculum, the resources, the additional professional development and training, making sure that the site is the site and that we do whatever we need to, to make sure that it's ready to house students appropriately, staff members, and again, create an environment that gives our kids optimal opportunity. You know, there's a lot of pressure. There's a lot of push for us to do this as soon as we possibly can. All of us should feel that. We all feel it, but we also want to do it well, right? Kids are at stake, and so we want to focus on that.
Do you anticipate any, because of the fact that we're moving kids from their home school to a different school, obviously the parent component is...
Critical.
Is very important, right, to this whole process? And so are you going to develop methods then to make sure that? Because we've always seen when there's, you know, a transportation of kids, that it's difficult, right, to keep that parent component in the loop? So I just want to make sure that that is part of the consideration as well.
Absolutely. So that is one of the four major components of the work that Catapult brings forward, in this case, for providing those services. It's outreach and it's training with the family, you know, in the traditional sense when we think of family, but also in our extended family and also community. So how do we put those supports in place? And it's being able to really have allocated resources and people to do that work and make that commitment to it. And that will impact our practices long-term. That would impact how we allocate team members and how we look at improving our practices to make that commitment. Providing the appropriate amount of information, the ongoing communication, the ongoing monitoring, and that transition work is, again, an area where we see a need to improve our practice for student outcomes.
Okay, thank you.
You're right on with that.
I just wondered if there's any concern about holding these classes in middle school, and these are K through six, is it? Or K through...
K-8.
K through eight. Is there any concern about the younger ages in an environment that is really set up for middle school?
Yeah. Yeah, we all appreciate that question. We've thought about how we could structure this. Do we pull the classrooms all apart and do we structure them differently? But we felt that by, if we're able to house them at a location like Kimball because of the location in the building that we are looking at where it's a separate wing, we really would be able to operationally set this up as its own area within the school. It would allow for a separate entrance, a separate exit, separate office space. So really minimizing that interaction and that contact with middle school students and the level of supervision that is provided, we really feel that that would be minimalized as well. One of our challenges, and this is what we're still though, you know, researching, and we will certainly take feedback and give greater consideration to this as well, that by spreading these classrooms out throughout the system, again, sometimes that is where we struggle to provide the ongoing, regular monitoring that's needed when we also have individuals, whether it be administration or coaches or specialists, who are spread around our district as well. But we can certainly give that additional review, and we will be back to provide you updates on what is finally determined.
And I was thinking more of the, also of the physical part. You know, think about when we had young children at Illinois Park and it wasn't, didn't have a playground for that, for, you know, appropriate for the size of children. So just those kind of things that you may not think about or the restroom sizes and that kind of thing.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Why the 40 days maximum? Is that state law or is that...
Yes. So we're actually limited to 45. We would shoot for less than that, so our goal would be approximately a 40-day. So if we're within 40 days, that's our limit that we need to work within.
And after the 40 days, they would either transition back to their home school or a therapeutic date here or...
Within that time, we would need to then complete an evaluation, if needed, to determine if there is going to be a change of placement for the student or to have enough strategies and resources in place for the student to transition back to their site.
Okay, thank you.
Is that requirement for... Is that because of the age of the kids? Is that requirement different for high schools or is that an across-the-board requirement?
That's across the board for all of our students. If we are considering an alternative placement, a long-term alternative placement, it would require that we either, again, open up a domain, complete an evaluation to pursue special education.
Okay.
It could be due to a medical diagnosis as well within that time or some... On occasion, we have students who require placement due to a court order as well. Mr. Rodriguez, is there anything you want to jump in on?
I think you've covered it, yeah. That's accurate.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, I believe that is the last item. It is. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second there. Second. You guys all wanted to stay, didn't you?
I have no roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.